Good evening.
Would you pray with me, please? O give her of all life, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I ask that you bless our mayor and city manager, all of our city staff, the council members, and our first responders.
I give you thanks for the service of our officials that they offer on behalf of the Broken Arrow community tonight. Bless those people who came to listen and to speak tonight. Allow all who are here to be in peace and unity, committed to making this community a good place to live. We are aware we bring with us our personal concerns and joys, our unrealized dreams and hopes for the future. We acknowledge that you brought us together to help bring justice in a committed community. Help us to remember that you are the one who places our officials in their current positions in leadership, that in leading justly and wisely, their actions and words glorify their commitment not only to the commitment but also, not only to the community, but also to you, who place them in their positions of authority. We pray tonight that the decisions on this city council will come with wisdom and thoughtfulness. I remind them that they speak on behalf of all your children living in the Broken Arrow community. They work toward the collective goal of making our community a place where all are welcome, safe, and that the good of all is considered with justice and mercy. I pray that Broken Arrow will be a shining beacon of hope, a good place to raise any family that enters its boundaries. We pray specifically for wisdom and strength, courage to do and say what is right and good for all the citizens. In this meeting, may the interests of others be first. May all gather here, act with love for the good of Broken Arrow. Help us to be good neighbors and to see your image in the face of others in this room. In the name of the Creator, the Redeemer, and the Sustainer, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Roll call.
Green, Ford, Parks, Gillespie, Wimpy.
Here. Please stand and join Counselor Ford for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
Hang on a second. I don't have my sign-in screen on. There we go.
Mayor, one comment when you threw voting on it, if we can.
I think we're ready. It went through.
Just want to thank you for the amendment to the senior citizen center agreement. There were a number of items that the council requested that were a part of the recommendations that the committee put forth and council accepted, and we're going to continue to work on those other recommendations, mainly focusing now on the programming. But I want to thank you for their support, and I know I speak on behalf of everyone, the board members, we have two here as well as the administration, that we're actually moving towards just basically making a better experience for those seniors within our community.
Item seven is public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognitions, and awards. Seven A, consideration discussion and possible direction regarding chapter two of the City of Broken Arrow ordinance, Article nine, employee rules and regulations, section two dash one four six, employment requirements. Mr. Spurgeon.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. As you know, a few months ago, the city council had a discussion regarding the current nepotism policy that we have in the code. And as a result of that discussion, you asked the administration to go back and take a look at the current policy and see if there are any recommendations that we could bring forth for your consideration. And tonight, we are ultimately bringing forward some recommendations. As a result of council's direction, I tasked the HR director to actually help me with this process by two things. One, we established a committee to actually look at those recommendations, and we conducted a survey of our, offered the opportunity for all of our employees to participate in a survey to get their feedback. And in the RFA, it is very detailed with regard to the results of that survey as well as those recommendations. Notwithstanding, I would like Kelly to come forward and just mention the results of those surveys, who participated, and then go over those recommendations we're asking you to consider. And after that, there'll be a discussion amongst the council members in whatever direction is given, then legal, we'll put the appropriate ordinance together for your consideration at the next meeting.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mr. Spurgeon, members of the council. As Mr. Spurgeon stated, we did send out a survey to all the employees in about mid-April. Three hundred and eight respondents, we did receive three hundred and eight responses from the employees, about one-third of the population. Of the survey, those nine questions, we also asked them to provide reasoning for their, or an explanation as to why they answered the question that they did, because the questions initially were asked as yes or no's. So, broken down, eighty-eight point six-four percent of the employees agreed with the current definition of immediate family in the ordinance. We did provide that in the survey. Eighty-one point eight-two percent agreed with the current employment requirements ordinance. Fifty-three point nine percent had concerns with a supervisor having a family member work within their same department. Forty point five-eight percent had a concern about married couples working in the same department. Fifty-nine point seven-four percent had concerns with a director having a family member work within their department. Twenty-three point three-eight percent had concerns about HR personnel having family members work in the city. And seventeen point eight-six percent had an issue with finance department employees having personnel work within the city. So as a result, the committee, we did get together numerous times, and we had decided in concert with the survey response and the committee meeting to redefine the immediate family, to include an employee's spouse, which would mean common-law, domestic partnership, and then parent, father-in-law, mother-in-law, brother, sister, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, grandparents of the employer spouse, son, daughter, and grandchildren, or foster or step situations within those relationships. In addition, we did not want to include some of those departments as we individually questioned HR, finance. So we also wanted to include language that for the prohibition of it is not a member of the immediate family of the city manager, of an elected official or the city, of the city, I'm sorry, or of anyone in the Department of Human Resources, legal, the city manager's office, information technology, the division of payroll, or a member of the immediate family of a supervisor within the Department of Finance. We thought that those, excluding those departments, would bring forward more transparency in the hiring and confidential discussions. In addition, a director or department head may not hire an immediate family member in their department or a division under their span of control. Additionally, if an employee is at a higher grade of employment than a relative of an employee, then the employee at a higher grade shall not be in direct supervision of their relative. There shall be a distinct separation of duties of each related employee. The higher-grade employee shall not participate in any way in the relative's evaluation, nor shall the higher-grade employee be involved in any aspect of the relative's promotional or disciplinary process, and shall not handle confidential material that could create improper or inappropriate access to confidential materials by the relative.
So that is summation of the recommendations, and as you can see, we're asking for the code to be changed in a couple of areas. At this point, we'd be glad to answer any questions the council member has.
Any questions? Our discussion?
I want to just discuss a little bit more. This was brought to me by some city employees that had concern, that's why we are where we are now. And I think the survey results speak for themselves. I think they're fine to work with people, but I think the department head, having someone with the immediate family and that person, you know, family member being a department head, almost sixty percent of our employees did not feel comfortable with that. And so, I guess I would like to add to or recommend, or have the committee look at it again on if we have a current city employee that meets those requirements that we're going to change, if they want to stay in their current position, I mean, they're there, we're not going to, I don't want to fire anybody or whatever, but I don't want that person to be able to transfer, you know, within, like, I don't want to be grandfathered in or transfer within their department as long as their family member is the department head. So I don't know how we can add that to...
Well, the recommendations would not prohibit any situation like that to take place right now, so we could go back and look at it. Or if the council's interested in having language, then that's something you could give, you could give me a direction on this evening. But I could go back and have our folks look at that and see if there are concerns.
So you're saying you don't think that people should be grandfathered into...
I say if we have an employee now that's in a position, their current position, I'm fine with them staying there. But if they apply for a different position within that department, then I think that if this passes, that that would not be okay.
Like a married couple, if they're not in...
If it's a department head, just a department head. I don't want to make, I don't want to have a separate set of rules for one employee, which is what we have right now, and then another rules for everybody else that's in the department. I want it to all be uniform, all the same.
So those that are in this position right now, they wouldn't be fired or lose that position, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm not asking for that to happen. I just don't want then a transfer to happen within that department. Like, the position that they have currently, totally fine with that. But I don't want them to be able to put in for a transfer or a different job within the department if this ordinance gets passed.
How about a promotion in that department? Say they're elevated, would that be considered?
I still, I feel like that's just going to cause a lot of morale problems within the department. I just, I mean, they're already employed, keep them there. I don't want to fire anybody. But I also don't think that they should be grandfathered in, like, they're an employee now, so they can go ahead and, you know, get a, transfer to a different position within the same department. I just don't think that would be...
I'm trying to figure this in my head, because like, I think where it's going to most, we're going to deal with the most issues, or what you're dealing with, would be within public safety. Because within the rest of the City of Broken Arrow, you could trans, you could promote up and maybe be in a different department, but you could still maybe use your skills that you had in a different department, but promote up. Whereas with public safety, as you promote up, you could be over different people than you were. I mean, it's just the nature of what public safety does.
That language in the last recommendation specifically addresses that, because the Vice Mayor's correct, there are a number of individuals in both of the public safety departments where we have, we have a captain of one of the fire stations who has a son, so he could never work on that shift, or if he became a battalion chief, he would not be able to work on that particular A shift, B shifts, whatever it is. You'd have to make those arrangements, but when it's the director, you're not able, you're not able to do that. Right now, it says you'll have the appropriate language that basically states that there'll be special conditions addressing that situation if that happens, which we have, we have one in the organization right now.
So could the captain never become the chief eventually?
No, the captain could become the chief.
Okay.
This, the person that he's related to, actually, that's a good question. If this passes, if this passes, that captain could not, we'd have to address it because you've already got a, you probably have to do some grandfathering there, because they're both already in the department.
And that's where the department, the department head is really where I have the issue with, not necessarily, and we were already too far in a process, so they just, that's why we're where we are now, is because we were too far in a process, and we didn't want it to, you know, hinder this person. But now they're there, and now, you know, I just, I mean, it's an issue, because employees came to me. Clearly, it's an issue because of what the survey said. People don't want the department head to have a family member. And so...
And I think when we talked about this before, I, I was totally on the side that you're coming from, even probably more so. And then I got, I started talking to my family members, and I was literally the only family member, like, my cousins and everybody, that didn't work with other family in their jobs. I mean, it was weird. I was like, okay, this, I'm like, the only one. And so it just made me think of it differently, but then also, public safety is just something that, I mean, it's almost sad, because when you hear, like, accidents happening, and like, I think of nine eleven, and just these big instances where families passed away together, because it is a tradition. It's, I just think there's something about police and fire, that it's a tradition that you, they become firefighters and police officers together, and, you know, brothers and, you know, then fathers and sons, and I don't know so much mothers and daughters.
I'm sure they have a certain charge.
Yeah. Yeah.
Everybody wants to be in a charge.
So that's my question. So if this passes, are we creating one set of rules for public safety and another set of rules for the other?
We already have that right now. We already have us, because of the situation that we are in, we have an employee that has a whole separate set of rules because of the situation we're in now.
But is this going to further that?
I don't think it's just one employee, though. I mean, I think it, there's others in public safety that...
That's the department head. It's just the department head. I'm okay with family members working with family members, as long as they're not the department head.
But you can't, but you have to, like, go there with it, because unless family members are never going to promote, you have to go to that next level of what happens when they promote, if someone promotes at a higher level, which I think is going to happen, obviously. That's kind of the, I mean, everyone wants to promote, right? When you're working, that's kind of your whole goal, I would think. So I just, I feel like this, for, and for me, this addresses it enough, that, but I do think we're going to have to, there's going to have to be some separation of once people have promoted, and if you're like, if you're the chief, or you're in a battalion chief, and, or in police, I don't know, with all the different, I can't keep track of all the ranks. But you could, in essence, end up having someone under you, if you work together now. We have to figure that out, and that's, I don't know how to do that.
But the director of those two are the two chiefs.
Right.
Isn't that correct? So what it says is that if you're a relative of the chief, then you're not, you wouldn't be able to be, you could work there if you're working there now, but you wouldn't be able to promote. Is that what you're saying?
That's what council members, Councilor Ford, yes.
That's what she's saying.
Basically, that would, that would hinder the legacy aspect of some of those careers. The whole nepotism thing is, it's an interesting subject, you know, some places allow, some places don't, but in my understanding, looking at it, it's, it's an ultimate exercise in trust. How much trust do you put in the employees that you've put in place? And I see both sides of that coin, because you, you have to trust that that department head is going to do what's right all the way down, and then that department head also has to trust that the people who are over said employee are going to do what's right. And then the people over said employee have to trust that if they do something they need to do, whether it's disciplining, disciplining said employee, or correcting them, et cetera, they have to trust that they're not going to receive any retaliation. So you don't want the special treatment, you don't want any retaliation, but nepotism is the ultimate exercise in trust of the employees that we've put in place to do the job.
Well, and, I mean, you, you know who you've got now, but you don't know who you may have in a few years down, and so, you know, a few years, you know, later on. And like I said, this, this concern was brought to me by employees, you know, both sworn and non-sworn, and then the survey was done, and it looks like, you know, that almost sixty percent of the people don't think it's right either. So I just don't want it to be a morale issue. I get what you're saying about, you know, it's a family tradition and that type of thing, and I think that's what probably kind of got the ordinance changed in the first place, because a fire chief wanted his son to be able to work for the city. But I'm just, I'm just speaking on behalf of the people that came to me to bring this up, and they feel like that, that it's going to be an issue, and they don't think there needs to be two sets of rules because there is a family member in there, and it just comes down to because he's a department head, not because he's a captain or sergeant or whatever, but because he's a department head. And all the, I mean, you, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but like, normal, normal, the chief of the, probably the fire or the police, is the end result of discipline. So, in this situation, this one employee will be taking a different route and going to HR, and that'd be, and they'd be the final say, instead of the normal route that everyone else has to go through for the department head to be the final say.
And that's what we have in place now.
We have a separate, separate way for this individual to not have access to the relatives' information, and if any discipline were to occur, there's a different route, that it would be myself at a pre-action hearing or pre-termination hearing, just like we do for the other employees, and then a step in for the director.
So let me ask this, is that going to be an issue? Because I know from experience working in law enforcement, that having someone look at a situation through the eyes of someone who's not in law enforcement is going to be different than having someone look at that situation, review it, who is in law enforcement, because you see things differently based on the training and knowledge and education you have. I'm not saying that you're not, your department's not capable, I'm just saying, is that going to create an issue?
Counselor, ultimately, it will come under my purview, and as you know, I spent twenty-seven years in law enforcement.
Yes, okay.
And I think that was the concern of the other employees, too, is if they were involved in a situation where this one employee was involved, are they going to have to go through HR, or are they going to be able to go through IA? And I couldn't answer that question. I don't know. I don't know what they would do, because I mean, that's one situation, and you can't have one person go one direction, and everyone else that was involved go a different direction.
Oh, like if there were multiple people in a situation?
Like if there was a shooting.
Okay.
It's not just the one person, it's whoever was on the scene.
Which is a great question.
Well, and that was one of, I mean, that was one of the big concerns, that...
My thought, too, is it is very difficult to find people who want to serve in public safety in today's world. And I, to limit ourselves that family members aren't going to apply, because if you can't move up, I mean, you're going to go somewhere else and apply. That, and I just, I feel like there's something to be said for tradition and for what Counselor Green mentioned, that, that legacy. I just, there's something special about that, in my mind, that I think deserves to be preserved.
Especially in the public safety sector, you know, there are a lot of families that historically, you know what I mean, they, they serve, and their dad served, and, and whatever, and I sure would hate to see that severed, where we wouldn't give them that ability to do that because of that. So if we have a way to find line to do it, I'm, I'm not for make it where it is not good for them to apply, you know what I mean? We don't want them to go to Tulsa to apply if they could apply here. And I just don't want to create a, you know what I mean, a negative situation. I don't know about how many people were not, were upset over the situation with the, that hiring that we're talking about, but, you know, if HR has a method to, if it did come to whatever, if the chief could back away from that, or director could back away from that in that decision-making in that particular way, I could, I could see that, because I can tell you historically, and not just public safety, there's been a lot of family members that have made great community endeavors here in Broken Arrow because their parents worked here, or because of whatever. They just learned that, they grew up with it, and they know that it's a good place to work. So I just hate to see that come about, unless there's a good reason, you know what I mean, for keeping them from being promoted in that area.
Mayor, based on everything I've heard, I, let me just summarize this, is that I think there's three options. One, you could ask staff to go back and look at this a little bit further. Two, you could accept the recommendations, or some portion of those recommendations. Or three, you could accept those recommendations and include some language that Counselor Ford is, is seeking. Those are the, if you just kind of surmise everything. So really, I'm just looking for some guidance for me all about what would you like to do.
I just want to make sure that the, almost sixty percent of our employees, when we ask them, that they know we're listening to them. And I feel like if we don't take it back and work on it more, they're not, they're going to say, what's the point? Why, why do we even do that, if you're not going to listen to us anyway? I mean, it's almost sixty percent.
Well, and the, the concerns of having a, I mean, that's a legit concern, but if we are, what I'm hearing is that, correct me if I'm wrong, but they, it does sound like they kind of have a different process if there's discipline. Is that true? If the, if they have a director that's above them that is a family member? So, and that process for everyone would be to go through, there's a process through HR, versus just the director making the decision?
That's correct.
Okay.
When it comes to a non-provocationary employee.
So FOP would not have any problem having their officers come to HR if there was a line-of-duty shooting instead of IA? That's what, that's what the concern was.
I believe that's addressed in their AOPs, and that, I don't know if the chief is here, but he, I think he can assign an investigator. We would not be qualified to investigate a shooting.
So what about the department heads? Child, like, I mean, they're going through HR. That's how you have it set up right now, is for that one person to go through HR, or whoever else is involved. I mean, you just said you weren't set up to do that. If that person becomes a police officer, what happens then?
To do a shooting investigation, I believe, that's what you're referencing?
Well, but that could happen. I mean, you just, you don't know. If you're a police officer, you could be involved in a shooting.
Well, I could tell you this, is that if, in fact, there is no restriction on any promotion or transfer, I would go sit down with the union president and make sure there was an understanding, because that person would be, if they became a police officer, they'd now be represented. And so I'd have to sit down with, make sure that it was clear, that if there is an incident in that particular situation, that we have, we have a clear path that we would go forward.
Well, I'd like to recommend to go ahead and maybe have that discussion with the FOP on what would happen, and to come back with something.
But I don't want to give the impression, because I feel like if there's a shooting, obviously, like Counselor Green mentioned, police officers are going to be whoever does, normally does that investigation, they're doing the investigation. I trust them implicitly to do that correctly, and I know you do, too. And so I guess what we're talking about here is if there was a bad shoot, I mean, because that would be where discipline would be involved, then I would, I still would trust that our investigators are going to say, I mean, regardless of who it is, they would still have to come out and say there was something that required discipline, and then that would move to whatever that next level is.
Or, or maybe we'd go to the outside, you know, if there was any question in it, go to the outside, an outside agency to come in to investigate it, you know what I mean, to look at it.
If I may, Mayor, on, on an investigation, if it is a police officer, and it's a shooting, and it was the chief's son, the shooting would be investigated through the normal channels of any, any other officer. It would be handled exactly as we would with any other officer. When it gets to the level of the chief making a decision, if it's his son, he would not be the one making the decision. At that point, it would go through the city manager and myself, in whatever direction is decided. HR is not qualified to do that type of investigation. The type of investigation they will do was with a civilian employee, but as far as police go, it will be handled through normal chains.
But if there were, but if there were three people involved in the shooting, two of them would go the regular, continue on the path of the investigation through, all the way up to the chief, and the one would not. It would go through you guys.
And that would be the, a discussion with, with the FOP president.
I think that was the concern of the employees, is how is that going to be handled? I think that was the, that was the concern of the employees that came to me, is what would, what would happen? And I didn't have an answer, and the answer that I did get is that the family member would be going through HR. I didn't know where everyone else was going to go, but, you know.
Wouldn't be through HR. That would be through...
Disciplinary processes come through HR.
Well, I will just say this, I assure you, is that no director's child or any family member is going to get any special consideration, because this is my watch. And so that's just not going to happen. So whether it's in, with the FOP, whether it's HR, it is, now it's a matter of trusting me, and my... me and, and my integrity to make sure that there isn't any favoritism. I haven't shown any in eight years, and I'm not gonna start. So I just wanna make sure that all the employees know that I'm just, that's not gonna happen.
And I believe that. So then what's the... So, so Counselor Ford, do you want to have further discussion?
Yeah, I think we need to have further discussion and, and see what, see how the FOP, how they feel like it.
Yeah, what's someone on the FOP in the part of the committee, I would assume?
No, it was just basically made up of, of directors, I mean, trying to anticipate every single scenario and question. There's some questions here, uh, we're gonna go back and we're gonna look at it, and I'm gonna do my best to try to address the, the concerns and come back with the recommendation. I don't know what that's going to be, um, but I'll come back to you as soon as I have an opportunity to look through and meet with, meet with.
But it shouldn't just be what we needed.
This person is not a member of the FOP right now, so really, I'd be speaking to the FOP about a hypothetical.
Right.
And I don't really like dealing in hypotheticals.
Well, and it's not just, I mean, it would be police and fire, and, but I still believe that the way that it's being handled, it's not, it sounds like it would go through city management, so.
Out of the 304 or whatever, how many of those came, how many of those, um, responses came from the police department?
There was, they were anonymous surveys, um, so there was no way to tell which, which person responded, unless they made specific comments in regards to, "In my department, the police department." But no, they were anonymous surveys.
Now, I mean, it does say that almost 82% agreed with the current employment requirement ordinance.
Yeah, it's the department head that they're only having problems with. I, I don't, I, they didn't have any problems with husbands and wives and all that as long as they were not the department head.
But the thing is, they could become, and they still were okay with the current. Because as of right now, anybody could become anything. I mean, I hope that people feel like that, that anybody can move up in our, within the city. And so as a result, you could be that department head. And they still were ha, I mean, they still agreed with the current ordinance.
Are, are you separating the, this just for public safety? I know we've talked about public safety, but the, the ordinance would go in, our policy would go in for any director.
Yes, sir.
Any employee. So we need to make sure we're thinking in those broader terms, too, because we do have a lot of people that do follow their fathers or mothers', you know what I mean, footsteps, and have made great employees to the city. So make sure that we're including all city directors in that case.
Yeah, for sure. I, I'm just speaking on behalf of the employees that came to me, and they were concerned it was gonna be, you know, a morale killer, and they didn't know how it was gonna work. They didn't think it would be favorable for them, for a department head to be in charge of that.
Does the counsel like, we'd like to act on the current recommendations, or just wait till, till we come back? Because obviously, I've got, I've written down a half a dozen things here that I need to follow up on based on the comments that have been made. And, you know, that could take a little bit, that could take a little bit of time, you know, so I can get as quickly as possible, or we can wait and come back and complete package, or you could, counsel, consider these tonight, and then I'll bring this back, and then counsel can decide if they wanna amend the, the policy further.
Do we want, I mean, do we wanna take a vote on just keeping the, or having the follow, the language that's...
Well, that's what he's saying. We can vote on what, what's presented to us, or we can basically table, and after he gets...
Because if we vote, and it's an, and it, it's not a yes vote, then what? If it doesn't pass, then what?
Well, I mean, part of me would like to see you do that, because what there is language that says that going forward, no one can be hired that is, that works for, that works for a director. So if someone, someone was to, to apply, then I've got to turn them away because I know there's something pending. So that would give some clarity going forward, with the understanding is, we're gonna come back and look at this one particular issue. But the idea of actually expanding it to those positions that have been recommended by the committee and myself, or IT, um, HR, I'd like to see those, payroll, I'd like to see those implemented, as well as the change in the definition of immediate family.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the, the language as it's written.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second, roll call? You need to go on your motion. Oh, sorry.
Okay, good deal. Go back.
I have a motion. Good day. Okay, thank you. Item A to citizens' opportunity to address the council, and we have none. Item nine, general council business. Nine A, consideration, discussion, and possible direction to the administrative, administration relative to nominating a city councilor or appointed, designated to the Broken Arrow Genealogy, um, Society Board. Lori Gill. We put all, we tabled all of this so that you could be a part of the discussion. We didn't wanna just appoint you to everything, Justin, so.
You're bragging on your volunteering, too.
I was gonna say, usually what happens is when you miss a meeting, you get volunteered to do all sorts of things. So you have a very kind council that opted to wait till you were here, so.
I appreciate that.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Spurgeon. I am here this evening, I actually have two items for consideration this evening, and something that we've been doing with a lot of our youth agreement, um, the people that have, um, that are using some of our facilities, um, council has expressed an interest to have a city councilor serve on those boards. And so there is an opportunity this evening for you all to consider and discuss having a city councilor serve on the genealogical society board. So it would be for one position.
Now, they meet with, in the, uh, History Museum.
That is correct.
So they don't have their own facility.
That is correct.
They're not separated out anyway at that point, is that correct?
Correct. And their meetings are in the evenings, and I should have brought you what evening it is, but it is an evening meeting.
Another one.
And it's quarterly, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Am I the only one here that has an ancestry.com account?
I need to talk yourself into that for it.
Well, you just stepped right into that.
No, but I really wanna, there's another one that I would love to do, that's another recommendation, but.
They just meet quarterly.
I would be happy to step up and serve.
I will nominate Justin Green to serve in this.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a s...
Sorry.
Yep.
I'm having issues with my clicking tonight.
Way to go, Justin.
Congratulations.
And he did it on his own.
There you go.
All right, item nine B, consideration, discussion, and possible appointment of a council member to co-sponsor the U City Council.
Yes. And this is the U City Council that we are actually getting ready to start the new session, and applications are out right now for sophomores coming in. And in the past, it has been Counselor Parks and former Counselor Scott Udi that served on that. And it's an opportunity now for somebody else within the city council to serve alongside Counselor Parks, um, with the U City Council, and go on the trips and do the meetings, et cetera. And it's a great opportunity to see our youth move up in leadership roles within the community that we hope someday will be sitting up here. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
This is one I think every single one of us would love to serve alongside with Johnny, um, because of our passion for our youth.
I just love how we automatically, like Johnny's doing this, like he doesn't have that choice.
Johnny's like, oh, his grandfather did.
I gotta say, I don't see anything on Johnny getting reappointed.
It's what happens when you get old, you grandfather a lot.
Well, you know.
No one can do an Arlington tour quite like Johnny can.
That's what I understand.
There you go.
He definitely has a passion for the youth, and they feel equally the same towards him, so.
Well, I'll say this again, I said it last time when we talked about it, is the, of course, being a retired teacher, I love to teach, uh, and when you have two people on it, they meet once a month, uh, and you have two people, if, if I couldn't make a meeting, or Counselor Udi couldn't make a, one of the meetings, we made sure that one of us was there. And, and actually, Lori, or whoever's in charge, are definitely in charge. All we're there for is to support her, you know, if there's any problems anywhere, help and get them on airplanes or whatever, uh, just to kinda help that and oversee. We can teach some of the classes.
It helps being a former band parent, you're kinda used to wrangling kids.
So, uh, so it's not like it's a ever once a month have-to-do, I mean, it's a, it's a fun time, uh, working with the youth. I always say they keep you young, and here I'm getting older, but it didn't work.
Well, one reason why I wanted to put this vote off until Counselor Green was here is because I think Counselor Green would make an amazing, um, well, I, because you see, he works with the youth, and he's the minister, like it's, if it works out with his work schedule, uh, but I think he would be, we would support you, of course, and whatever, but, um, I think you would be great to help Johnny with that program, if you're interested in that.
We meet, we meet once a, a month, and Lori would decide on what time. Usually it's from five to seven, or two hours, once a month. And then we travel with them, and it does kind of, I won't say interfere, but we kind of judge our trips to Washington DC or whatever, to be where the youth at all the time. So, uh, anyway, it'd be, it's, it's a great duty. You don't get a lot of pay, but you get a lot of satisfaction.
You get some of your salary you get right now.
You do get a lot of satisfaction working with the kids.
Again, I, just like everyone else, I do think it's a great opportunity to be involved with our youth and, uh, to, to learn with them and from them, and just a great opportunity to serve, so I'd be happy to do it if no one else is opposed or wanting to step into that role.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it. Do we motion in a second for Counselor Green to be appointed?
I'm trying to think if I have anything else on my list that I need to have a volunteer. Tonight might be the perfect time.
Don't miss another meeting.
You've got it.
I'm feeling amicable right now.
Thank you.
All right. All right, item nine C, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the master plan for the new Central Park Rose Garden, and approval to execute amendment number one to agreement for professional consulting services with RL Shears. Charlie Bright.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name's Charlie Bright, I'm with the Engineering and Construction Department. Um, we're here to talk about the master plan that we worked on for the Central Park Rose Garden, as well as an amendment to the design for contract. Um, in 2018, when the citizens passed the general obligations bond, as part of that bond, there was an unnamed project for a rose garden in Central Park. It was for $500,000. Um, late last year, in October, this council approved a contract with RL Shears to work on a conceptual design of what that park could look like and a master plan, um, and that's what we're here to show you guys tonight. Um, we have it to go up on screen. There we go. So this was the overall master plan. Um, the, the big points are, this is at the back of Central Park, you've got the community center, it would be off to the right of the screen, and this is towards the back, where you get, uh, closer to the neighborhood. Um, the highlights are, you have like an entryway plaza with a pergola, walk-through gate area, where the goal's to have a water feature there in the middle. And then the, the primary focus there, it looks small on paper, but that's actually a pretty big area, if you're familiar with it, what it shows, but the primary highlights would be four large gardens there around the front when you come in. Um, what we see to the north and south around that is a lot of, when we, um, there's a lot of room for future expansion if the garden were to grow. Um, we've worked over the past several months, um, to come up with this plan, and we've worked a lot with Keep Broken Arrow Beautiful, who is here in attendance tonight, um, and we came up with this plan, we've showed this plan to them a month or so ago, and they, we've all agreed that, um, we felt like this is the best way to go, and they offered their support for it as well. Um, on the next sheet, phase one, we pared it down just a little bit to what, this is what we believe we could afford with the bond money that we have currently. Um, it gets a little rid of some of the stuff to the north and south, we eliminate some of the gardens on the side, but we maintain the core feature of the big gardens up front. Um, those look like really large gardens, which they are, or they look small on paper, but they're actually really large gardens, and those gardens would have more walking trails and stuff going between them. Um, and I think the idea is that each garden would have a little bit more of a theme to it, um, to offer kind of a variety of what we can, would show in the area. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is that the existing parking lot out front that we have there now?
Yes, sir.
That you can circle around?
Yes, sir, that's the circle of the parking lot.
We've been working with Beverly and Sharon, they're here this evening, and I'm very happy to recommend this to city council members. And then, um, I think what, we're gonna add this to the sell of the bonds for this year, so we can actually get this phase one started, so they can actually go out and start looking for fundraising opportunities to help with, with the, the future part of the project. And so unless there are any questions, or after, there are some questions, I'd ask council to approve this so we can go forward.
Okay, any discussion?
It's exciting. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Oops, sorry, Johnny.
We have a motion and a second, roll call?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Charlie. Item nine D, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of and authorization to execute resolution number 1542. Trevor Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and Mr. Spurgeon. Uh, the city has a stormwater easement located about a quarter mile north of Florence Street and east of Olive Avenue, it's no longer needed. Uh, back in April, this body had voted to go ahead and close that easement. Now the, uh, the property owner that is, impacts this filed a lawsuit to vacate it, basically means, uh, it'll be removed. Uh, since it's no longer necessary, uh, we recommend that you authorize us to enter into the Journal of Enture Judgment, uh, that allows us to, um, vacate the easement. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
Motion to approve, or a second, sorry.
We have a motion and a second, roll call? All right, item nine E, consideration, discussion, and possible appointment of one city council member to the subdivision regulation update committee.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilors, Mr. Spurgeon. We're bringing this item back to you after two weeks, so that you can all discuss it, and hopefully come to an agreement on who to appoint to our subdivision regulation update committee. Uh, we expect this committee to meet four to six times over the next six months. We are, it is, the subdivision regulations are one of the many items that we are updating as part of an overall review of the development processes, and, uh, we need a city council on the representative, on the, this eleven-member committee, so at this point, we would ask that you...
I understand, I'll nominate Vice Mayor Gillespie.
I'm interested in the boring ones, so, although it's not boring.
This is big.
Yeah.
This is gonna be big.
I think she's the perfect candidate for that.
So we have a motion?
Unless you want to just...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, I guess you're coming back up here in a second, actually.
Thank you, Kristin.
Yes, thank you, Kristin. Uh, there are no preview ordinances. Um, item eleven, uh, eleven A, consideration, discussion, and possible adoption of ordinance number 3795, our approved tree list.
Good evening, again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilors, Mr. Spurgeon. Uh, two weeks ago, we previewed this ordinance, and we're bringing it back to you tonight for a full vote and consideration also of the emergency clause. This is a simple update to the, um, approved street tree list. Uh, we have had some problems, as everybody's aware, and I've been made aware, with the Calery Pears, now known, also known as the Bradford Pear. And so we're asking that you review this ordinance and please, uh, approve it, as well as the accompanying, uh, emergency clause.
I move to adopt.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call?
We're outlawing Bradford Pears in Broken Arrow.
That's it, we're outlawed.
My husband is so excited.
I'll entertain a motion for an emergency clause.
That's as exciting as me.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call? All right, item eleven C, consideration, discussion, and possible adoption of ordinance number 3797, closing a utility easement, um, from a tool suit. Kevin?
And one more time, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilors, Mr. Spurgeon. Again, we previewed this ordinance, uh, two weeks ago. This is a simple vacation of an existing easement for utility purposes. It's a seventeen and a half foot wide easement on a property owned by Mr. Artul Sud. Um, there are no easements, or, excuse me, there are no existing utilities in it, so all of our utility companies have said, "Yes, please, return this property to the rightful owner and let them build on it, develop it, and, and move forward." So we're asking for your approval, as well as approval of the accompanying emergency clause.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 3797.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call?
Move for the emergency clause?
We have a motion and a second for emergency clause, roll call? All right, uh, item twelve is remarks and inquiries by governing body members. Um, I was gonna remind everyone that Saturday is the new date for Taste of Summer. Um, it'll be nice and hot for you to come out and eat ice cream with us. I will be in the Dunk Take at 10:30, if you want to come and dunk me. thirty if you want to come and dunk me. I think Chief Moore is nine AM. Is that right?
Yes.
We've got a list of people that are going to be in the Dunk Take, so you can come and dunk us. But then there's also the back-to-school bash, which is very important. That'll be taking place Saturday as well. And then I found out today that the VFW is going to start playing taps and the first Monday of each month at ten AM in the Veterans Park. So kind of neat. They, this week, they did, I think it was four or five different times, they played taps for Korean War Memorial honoring that war. And so they've decided they're going to do it the first Monday. So just wanted to let everyone know. Anyone else?
I do have something. I want to brag on our Parks Department. I think all of us do participate and visit our parks every once in a while. So I got to do that a couple of weeks ago for my granddaughter's second birthday at Jackson Park in War II. And there was just a couple of issues, you know, because when you're actually in the park doing things, you see things that maybe you wouldn't normally see. So I turned those in, just like any citizen could, and it was fixed by like Monday. I mean, they were on top of it. So thank you, Matt, and your team for taking care of everything at Jackson Park. And I just want to let our citizens know, we can't fix it if we don't know about it. So just make sure it's super simple. You can do the Action Center app.
Yeah, don't just post it on Facebook.
Yes, don't post it on Facebook. But they, they got right on top of it and took care of it. And there's just a couple of things. The only one thing that's still outstanding is a little more pressure for the water park, but they're going to fix it. But after they shut down the water park, then they'll fix it. So that way the kids can still play.
When I think Councilor Parks granddaughter, she surveyed three parks this weekend.
I told her this morning, she is going in the second grade, and Merna needed to do some work around the house. We took care of her today. So I took her to three different parks. And I said the city wanted her to grade the youth facilities for each one. So she wrote it all out, how she graded them. She just loved it. I have to tell you, the events park, though, it won by a big amount. She loved it. So she's big. I gave her five dollars. I told her the city paid her five dollars to do that. So.
I gave her twenty.
So she loved it. She loved it. And so she, we had a good morning.
We do have beautiful parks, and I know it takes a lot for our park staff to keep them beautiful. The, you know, landscaping and everything working, and the toilets working. And we're so excited to have flush toilets at Jackson Park. So anyway, thank you, Matt, and your team.
And we really, I mean, when you go to other cities and see their parks, and I was in Florida last week and went to some parks, and y'all, we really are spoiled here. I mean, we have splash pads at so many parks. And it's just, it's really, until you go to another city and you realize, it's like, kind of takes you back. It's like, wow, I had no idea how spoiled we are. So.
You always want to come back home.
Yes. And I do want to read the, I'm going to start over because we finished the Constitution. So now, I never read like the preamble and the articles of the Constitution before, so I'm starting over. So the preamble to the Constitution, y'all might have heard of this before. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." I felt like I needed to sound really official when I read that.
I will say, I appreciate that you didn't say, you know, the thing. So thank you for that.
Yes.
I will add to one thing you said about the back-to-school bash coming up. The police department is also collecting school supplies. You've got one more week to participate in the school supply drive at the public safety complex from nine AM to nine PM. Last week, if anybody wants to get out and donate those school supplies to help make that bash a bigger success, I would love to have you come out and help with that as well.
Awesome. All right, city manager, any remarks?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, just three things. First, we have members of the COBA U class that are in the audience this evening, and I just wanted to recognize those that are here and say thank you for taking time out of your schedule this evening to meet with the council members and to thank the council members for coming this evening and getting to know them. A little more about this important program we have internally. Secondly, I'm not going to let him get away as being cognito, State Representative Ross Ford. He was mentioned last week by Kenny Schwab with his assistance on the eight-year plan for ODOT. And I know that Ross made that a priority when Kenny and I both spoke to him about how important this was to us. And I know that he's helping, he'll continue to help. And so I just want to say thank you, Ross. Thank you very much, sir. And then finally, I was going to mention this in the Bama. However, I'm not sure many people stay with us after the council meeting, especially when we move into another meeting, is that right now we're at about seventy percent capacity on our water usage, which is a good number for this time of year. It is getting hotter, obviously. We're not concerned. Chuck and his team and Kenny are monitoring it very closely. We are at about two million gallons a day, I understand, for rural water four. And we have a turn-on connection with Tulsa, but we always have if that, if we need it. But right now, I think we're in great shape in terms of water production, quality of water. And so if you get asked by anybody, is we're not having any concerns. And if we get around the eighty to eighty-five percent, you'll be hearing from me, and we'll start to show a little bit of concern in terms of putting out some notice about conservation more than we already are. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. We do have an executive session, so I'm going to entertain a motion to take a brief recess.
So moved.
Second.
Green.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.
All right, I call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority meeting to order. Roll call.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Gillespie.
Here.
Wimpy.
Here. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Nope, got to click it. All right, we have no public hearings, appeals presentations, no general authority business, or any remarks from governing body members. City manager?
I do. Madam Chair, just one thing. PSO, I would like to publicly acknowledge to their help. We had a streetlight situation that we needed some additional lighting in one of our developments in Camino Village specific, and it came as a result of a conversation with the police and the administration. And I helped jump on it in talking to Michael Gordon, and they immediately got out there. We, Parks cleared some tree limbs, and we got the lighting. And believe me, it's extremely well illuminated.
It is.
And so I need to acknowledge, Michael usually attends a meeting to say thank you for quickly moving on that for us.
Yeah. Literally night and day.
Yes.
I mean, literally night and day. And they're so excited. So.
That was amazing.
Yeah.
So I appreciate the efforts of the police to go out and from those meetings and the council members that attend, bring back those things. As Councilmember Ford was correct, we can't fix it, we don't know about it.
That's right.
And so that's why it's important to use the system.
Absolutely. All right, we have no executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Roll call. Call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority to order. Roll call.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Gillespie.
Here.
Wimpy.
Here. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
There was.
There was one item we wanted to pull.
Okay, which item?
It is C. No, I'm sorry.
B.
B is in Bravo. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, B.
Confirmed, B?
B.
Okay.
B.
All right. Do we have approval minus item B?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent minus item B.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Item B is approval of and authorization to execute third amendment to the economic development agreement by and among Oak Trust Development LLC, Steve Easley, the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority, and the City of Broken Arrow.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. Spurgeon, Norm Stevens, Assistant City Manager of Administration. The reason that we're here tonight is for an amendment to the Aspen Ridge Economic Development Agreement. Just a little background, on June twenty-ninth of 2021, the initial, in the initial agreement, the developer committed to the construction of a sixty thousand square foot Reesers grocery store and the construction of a hundred and sixty-eight unit multifamily apartment complex by June thirtieth, 2023. Also, by June thirtieth, 2024, the development of over two hundred thousand square foot of new retail and commercial space by, once again, June thirtieth, 2024. The third amendment became necessary due to the developer needing additional time to meet the expectations of the agreement. There's a variety of reasons that this came about. One was the unforeseen sale of Reesers to the Brookshire Brothers, the unforeseen cell tower property rights issue, necessity to modify stormwater detention facilities to ensure no adverse effects associated with downstream owners. Staff began working with Mr. Easley in March of 2023 to obtain a better timeframe for completion of the project. In May, during a meeting with Mr. Easley and his staff, Mr. Schwab and I became aware from Mr. Easley of an easement issue with the cell phone tower. This caused additional delays for Mr. Easley, preventing him from giving me a better estimate of what dates he could assure us that he could accomplish what is in the original agreement. Mr. Easley did a presentation to the authority on April eighteenth of 2023. During that time, he went over what was, had already gone in and when he anticipated. However, the issue of the needing to amend the agreement was not mentioned. In hindsight, I should have mentioned it at that time, but felt that we would be coming to you before that was over, or before that timeline was up. Another contributing factor to the delay was the fact administration was waiting for the developer to make a one million dollar payment. I'm happy to announce he's made that payment on June thirtieth of 2023. There have been numerous issues involving onsite detention of stormwater. Mr. Schwab has spent numerous hours, many hours, and I give him tremendous credit for this, working with the developer, his engineer, and downstream property owners in an effort to ensure the stormwater detention area was adequate without being significantly oversized. If you have questions on stormwater, I'll defer to Mr. Schwab to answer that because I am grossly unable to do so. Due to the initial design for the onsite stormwater detention area, we found that it would significantly reduce the developer's ability to place two hundred thousand square feet of additional retail on the property in question. Once again, Mr. Schwab worked to reduce the size of the detention area by roughly one-third, which allows for additional retail restaurant space. However, it will still be problematic to be able to achieve the full two hundred thousand square feet. Due to this, Mr. Spurgeon approved incorporating land into the project area located north of Aspen Ridge, currently owned by Mr. Easley. Fortunately, this is in the TIF zone, and the monies that come from that area will be used to help pay off the TIF note. Item four, item four point two C in the amendment addresses this. Mr. Easley has requested an extension for the completion of Reesers to June thirtieth, 2024. Mr. Easley has updated information on when construction will begin, and he'll be able to provide you with that information if you request it. Item four point three A addresses this. Mr. Easley has requested an extension for completion of the apartment complex to April thirtieth, 2025. He has an update on when the construction will begin. And item four point three B addresses this. One of the things I will say in reference to the apartment complex is through discussion with Mr. Spurgeon and I, we believed and continue to believe that allowing the construction of that apartment unit prior to the Reesers getting started going vertical would have been incredibly problematic to the homeowners around there. And the concern that I had in specific that those homeowners would come in and say that we had initiated a bait and switch attack just to get apartments in there. I made this very clear to Mr. Easley from the time that agreement was approved. Mr. Easley has requested an extension for that. Mr. Easley has requested an extension for complete construction of the two hundred thousand square foot commercial and retail space to December thirty-first, 2024. That is extra time. However, it should be noted, he is currently not outside his timeline of when he is supposed to have that built. Item four point three C addresses this. And once again, the final item in that agreement is confirmation that Mr. Easley paid the City of Broken Arrow or the authority the full one million dollars that he owed them. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion or questions?
Norm, you want to, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No.
You want to mention about the stormwater change and how that we probably would have been dumping water downstream?
I can, or if you want.
I think it's important.
So in the original agreement, it required a stormwater detention pond. Mr. Easley and his team actually was granted verbally, you can start Reesers without it. But moving forward, it's got to be put in. His team designed the stormwater detention pond, actually used a very well-known stormwater engineer that's worked downstream. He's worked in this basin. The design actually oversized the pond. That wasn't directed by Mr. Easley, and it wasn't directed by the City of Broken Arrow. Actually, the engineer of record here just thought that's what needed to be done in this basin. It's above and beyond our ordinances. It's above and beyond our design criteria. We spent two hours a couple of weeks ago with the downstream property owner, with Mr. Easley's team, with our team, going through the whole thing. And we finally got it to the point that this property owner, Mr. Easley, is only required to detain the stormwater runoff that's coming off that thirty-nine acres. He's not required to detain any, over detain to offset something from upstream that wasn't detained prior. There's no requirement for that. The way the pond had been designed, it was doing that. So it was taking up more land, more surface area, and actually not really filling up when you took a look at the numbers. His team right now, his professional team, is in the process of redesigning that. It's my understanding, and Mr. Easley might be able to state otherwise, but it is my understanding that his team is supposed to submit that tomorrow for us to process. They've already been granted an earth change permit. We granted an earth change permit, I think it's actually July the seventh, but verbally back in May, so that they could actually get started on the work there. The come and go, the Chipolis, we have to have that detention in place. The contracts already been signed. They can move forward at any time, but Mr. Easley and his team, working with us, started looking at that pond going, you are wasting space. You are wasting valuable retail space, and you don't need to. So that's basically been a little bit of the holdup from, I'm going to say, I think the meeting with Mr. Easley's team, I believe, was April the twenty-sixth. And they submitted some stuff. We've got the approval as is, but the design is too much. So that's the process right now. We expect it in, as I said, tomorrow. My team is ready to jump on it and make final comments and make any necessary so that they can move forward immediately.
And I'm the one that asked for this to be pulled from the consent, just because I get so many questions. I, I mean, sometimes it's daily. I'll get messages about it. And I just felt like it was really important for us to have a public record, a discussion about it, so that everyone realizes kind of what's been going on. And I'm glad to hear that we're able to put in more retail and that that detention space gets to be decreased a little bit. I'm sure Mr. Easley is happy about that, too, to be able to put in more, more retail as well. Yeah, I just, as y'all know, South Broken Arrow is just ready to have Reesers again. And it's, I know everyone is, so.
And if I may, Mayor, actually through the discussion with the city manager and Norm Stevens today, had the apartments gone in without the detention pond, I honestly fully believe that we would be dealing with a lawsuit right now. So by chance, we're actually at the right location with it, process-wise.
That's good to know.
You know, I would add to that, being one of the two councilors that went through the April election. It is big to South Broken Arrow, and I don't live in South Broken Arrow, but I'm the councilman at large. And we did hear a lot at the meetings that we were at. And we told them that they're well on their way. And I was kind of surprised that there wasn't more done on the facility. I certainly am not knocking anybody on the staff or questioning anything, because that's not our place to do that. But with the city manager, I would say that I would think that we have these dates right here in writing is that we have at least every month or two, a designated time to make that presentation so that we can make it to our constituents that are asking the question, you know, we're up to date, we don't have any problem with it here, or whatever. So I think it's going to be tough to build it by June the thirtieth, but I'm not a contractor of next year. And I'm not doubting that now. I'm just looking forward to that. I'm just saying, that's a pretty tight, that's a pretty tight schedule, I would think. So I would like to see an update. And it doesn't have to be Mr. Easley, but if staff would just make a report exactly where they're at with that, at least once every month or every two months, to just keep us appraised, so that we can keep the public appraised. Maybe in Kristi's case, as many emails as she get, maybe it needs to be a daily. But it is important. It's important to the community. We've promised that. I don't know if I really agree with the staff on waiting to start the apartments after, because it might look like we're trying to put it in. I would think that would be developed in such a way that they both might come together about the same time. You know, if they had to shop for a month or two someplace else for- You know, if they had to shop for a month or two someplace else for groceries, but you know, it's going to be a long lag time between the time that Reesers opens and then you're starting those apartment complexes. It takes a while to build them. So I just don't understand that part, but I do understand the Reesers, and I would like feedback so that we can communicate that.
Actually, great question, and I appreciate the vice mayor conversation I have with her. Starting at the, I think it's September 5th meeting, under your consent agenda, there will be an update on the project, and it's going to be broken down into several different deliverables to talk about terms and conditions of the agreement, any new announcements, it's going to be based on three or four parts, and then that way it's going to be in the consent agenda. You can pull it off if you have questions, and then if you have a question from a resident, you'll have it right there that you can refer them to it on the agenda, or you can pull it off and you can have it and you can let them know the latest.
Good. It'll be good. Appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate the updates as well. I mean, I think we all want to be as transparent as possible, and I would hate for any of our citizens to think that we're doing a bait-and-switch. I mean, we definitely would not do that, but I think with this transparency and update, it'll be good for us, and it'll be good for our citizens, too.
Well, and it's just always good to, I mean, I don't know of any project that goes perfectly, right? I mean...
I haven't found one yet.
Right. So just to, because obviously, we're very, we're on social media a lot, so we see all of the comments, it's never going to happen, it's, you know, and people sometimes just don't understand what goes on behind the scenes to make a project happen, so it's good to just have updates and have people understand what actually has been taking place since we announced it. So, thank you. All right.
Appreciate you guys' work.
All right. I'll make a motion to execute the Amendment to the Economic Development Agreement. Do I need, are we doing this voice?
No. You can go ahead and use broadcast, yes.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right. There are no presentations. In general authority business, 6A, consideration discussion and possible approval of the Broken Arrow Economic Development Incentive Policy. Jennifer Rush.
I might say, as Jennifer's coming up, that she made a presentation the other day at a chamber function, and talking about that, that she's over, and she did a tremendous job, very informative, and I was really proud for her and proud for the city, but you did a very good job.
We missed you today at Rotary, because we read a luncheon, so I heard you did a great job.
Well, I was glad for that, because I combined a couple of presentations I've been doing over the last couple of weeks, and so I was hoping that there wouldn't be audiences that have already heard them, so it was perfect. Thank you, guys. Thank you, councillor. And good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Trustees, Jennifer Rush, Economic Development Manager for the city. I also have Nick Duffel that will also be presenting with me as well, his first time to present to this body, and he's Vice President of Economic Development for the Economic Development Corporation. Jennifer Conway is probably watching, and I need to say this, she would like to give her biggest apologies for not being able to be here. She is at the Institute for Organizational Management Training right now, and she really wanted to be here. And I can tell you that this policy is something that Jennifer and I, it was a labor of love that we put for months and months, working on this, comparing it to other cities, and just making sure that we presented something that was really put together well. Then Mr. Duffel came on, and I think his first week, we told him that we're tired of looking at it, that we need another set of eyes, and so that was essentially what he was doing his whole first week in self-employment, and it was a great getting-to-know-you-team-building game, because, you know, he's like, this doesn't make sense that you guys wrote here, and so it was a really good project that we worked together. So just a little bit of history on this, the city offered couples a great Valentine's Day experience on February 14th to be able to go to the polls and vote on the PSO franchise. That franchise was a 25-year agreement, 2% for franchise fee, and 1% for economic development fee. That policy passed, 68% approved that passer, which gave us the 1% for economic development. Per council direction, we looked at putting together an incentive policy for this money that will generate 1 million to 1.2 million per year. The bulk of this project will be used in two ways, and this money will be used for economic capital improvements, and also company relocations and the recruitment of those job creations and high-wage jobs. So keeping our residents within Broken Arrow and attracting new talent to our area, that keeps our dollars and our spending dollars within our city as well. So that is the bulk of this. There's also included on this some information, including defining our retail projects, so destination, what destination retail is, what regional retail, and then also defining projects located in city-designated areas of redevelopment. So that is where a city has put in money into an area to redevelop, and there's parameters within that. So I'm going to introduce Nick and have him explain some more intricate things of how the policy works, and we're available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilors. Thanks for having me up here today. So Jennifer gave great history of it. So my first day, first day on the job, I was given the incentive policy to review and finish. So happy to do it, you know, it really makes Broken Arrow more competitive, not just in the state of Oklahoma, but nationally as well. So, you know, the key points of what the Economic Development Incentive Policy does is it helps create job and capital investment here in Broken Arrow. So the two points that we want to look at for this incentive policy is a minimum capital investment of $500,000 or more, and the creation of at least 10 full-time jobs in Broken Arrow. So to be eligible, you have to meet those two criteria immediately. If you do not, you're not eligible for the incentive. So if you do meet that, if a business does meet that criteria, they are eligible to receive a minimum of $2,000 up to a maximum of $5,000 per new job created within the City of Broken Arrow and its boundaries, with a maximum of $500,000. Capital investment, if they meet that criteria, they're eligible to receive 1% to 3% cash or equivalent incentive based on that capital investment, up to a maximum of $1 million. All of this is dependent on the funds available in the incentive fund. So the process for how this will work will be, there'll be a team made up of city employees, Chamber and Economic Development employees who review the application. The application will include information such as capital investment, job creation, a pro forma document that will be submitted to us, the Economic Development Corporation and Chamber of Commerce. We will review that in-house to make sure that the information is accurate, that the application is complete. We will review, we will pass that off to the team of chamber staff and city staff. They will review and make a recommendation to city council for approval. So we actually presented this to our Economic Development Corporation Board in July, and it passed unanimously with no questions or feedback. So if you guys have any questions or feedback, we would love to hear it now, and welcome any comments.
So the funding, then, would come from the public service taxes, is that correct?
Correct.
An extra? And what was it, 50% of it?
Yes, sir, actually, more specifically, it's estimated there could be between $1 million and $1.2 million a year, which council said we want to broke up into what I would call a capital economic development fund, and then a fund for incentives, and until that money builds up over the next year or two, if there is a situation that somebody may come in that meets the policy, the city may have to consider what's in the fund, as well as other opportunities if we had it until that fund started to build up. Plus, you did say is that one of the things we're going to do with the economic development's capital side of it was look at using some of those funds to partner with the relocation of the utility lines at New Orleans Square. And so that's something I need to visit with you about probably later this yearly next year, because that was one of the things you said you wanted to do with the funds.
Absolutely.
I've looked over this, Mayor, members of the Authority, and I can tell you, as I've scoured it three or four times, I think it's a great policy, a lot of work's been put into it, and I'd recommend approval.
Now for the discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Good job, Mr. Duffel. All right. And there are no presentations. Oh, I already said that, just kidding. And we're in remarks by governing body members. I did forget to say, on an economic development note, councillor Green and I attended 1101 Barber Lounge's back-to-school bash that they put on, and what a great community partner this is, this is his third year to put on this back-to-school bash, and we had vendors out there, we had city employees out there, had an amazing bubble machine that we actually got into, and so it was just really fun, and it was great that it was just, it was a merchant in New Orleans Square that decided to invest his time and money to put together a community event, so just wanted to thank Rob Cherry for putting that on, so. Anyone else? City manager?
Members of Authority, just a couple of things. Councilman Parks stole my thunder when he mentioned the meeting last Friday. I appreciate him and councilmember Green being there. I know the three of you would have been there if you had been in town. It was incredible, because sometimes we move so fast to step back and see everything that's happening, and then you hear the vice mayor talk about Parks in another community. It was a recap, just a reminder, is they went out and did exactly what that study said several years ago, and they raised the additional funds to expand economic development administration, which is what you see now, and it was very well put together, and so I appreciate the feedback that I've gotten from all of you about it. Secondly, is that I'm going to be sending something out to you probably later this week or next week. We move so quick that I have a recap, I've asked Jennifer Rush to keep track of announcements of new businesses that open in our city compared to maybe a couple of other cities, and I'm going to be sending that out to you so you can just see the number of businesses that have actually committed to Broken Arrow, and we're going to start providing that on a quarterly basis, just to let you know the number of businesses. And I think one of the things that I was most proud of a presentation, besides the overall presentation, was the efforts at New Orleans Square. It talked about being less than 50% occupied just a few years ago, now we're over 90%. So, I mean, that shows a tremendous investment by the private sector, and we're just getting started, so that's all I have.
Absolutely. And there is no executive session, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
You guys are fast.
Moving on.
All right. We are back in regular council. Entertain a brief recess.
I'll make a motion to do a brief recess and clear the room for executive session.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Green.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Wimpy.
Yes.